I'll call to order the November 13, 2017 Regular Business Meeting of City Council. Mr. Hamp, you'll lead us in pledge of allegiance.
It will be my pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll remind everyone, if you want to speak during the public hearings or citizens' comments, there's sign-up sheets in the back. The first item of business is consideration of the consent agenda, is our motion to accept it as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, is our second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five oh. Do members of City Council have anything they wish to present tonight?
We've got a few things. First is, just want to let folks know that we met, we've created a sort of a legislative, and I guess colleagues too, we've sort of talked off, a little bit offline, off and on the past couple of months about creating a sort of a legislative action request for our local delegate, Dicky Bell and Emmett Hanger. We met with, Mayor and I met with Dicky Bell a couple of weeks ago or so, and forwarded a couple of requests. One is to support a capital improvement grant program for K through 12 education that's being advanced by the Virginia Municipal League, and showing our support with that, as well as a couple of other initiatives, one of which particularly being the Virginia Natural History Museum and that campus here in Waynesboro. And I think I'd speak that we're all very interested in that, and so appreciate Delegate Bell and his willingness and agreement to carry forward that initiative, and look forward to continuing work, working with him and Senator Hanger over the next several weeks as they begin their work in Richmond. Next, I just wanted to congratulate the Waynesboro School System on particularly Kate Collins Middle School and their partial accreditation they recently received. That's certainly a, an important achievement, and appreciate all the work that school, that the school division and the teachers and administrators at Kate Collins have put forward to that, to that, in that regard. Wanted to also update folks on the Main Street facility, I can't remember what the address is.
322.
322 Main Street, thank you, Mr. Hamp, to let folks know that is, it's a storefront that has a lot of debris laying in the, in the, on the ground and so on, and to report that the owner has applied for and received the necessary permits to begin abatement work and remodeling of that, of that storefront, so that's good news to hear. And then lastly, would just congratulate staff, and also just to let folks know that the conference of plan, the draft conference of plan is out and is available for download at planwaynesboro.org. It's available now, and I want to thank staff and my colleagues and members of the steering committee and the public, you know, the hundreds of people that have participated in the plan development to date for all of their work, and, but the work isn't over yet, and so we really need folks to please participate. Please download the document, share it with your friends and neighbors and family members, the people that you care about here in the city, and, and share the plan with them, and then show up and please participate. We've got two planning, conference of plan workshop meetings, public meetings tomorrow night at the Waynesboro Public Library from four to six, and then at Basic City Brewery on Wednesday from four to question mark, I think, maybe about seven o'clock or so. But we're trying to, trying to, I think we're going to stick around a little bit, hopefully stick around a little bit longer for that one, only so that folks that work in Charlottesville that are commuting back over or driving a distance can be able to participate in it, recognizing that six o'clock might be difficult for them to, to arrive. So that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll move on to item four, is to hold a public hearing and consider adopting a resolution authorizing the application for a transportation alternate program to the South River Greenway Phase Two B, which is Shiloh Baptist Church to North Park right-of-way in construction phase. Mr. Jones.
Mayor, members of council, it's my pleasure to present this brief update on Phase Two B, another exciting chapter in Waynesboro's South River Greenway Trail system. So, Greenway Phase Two B summary is from Shiloh Baptist Church, which is in essence Riverside Drive to North Park. Proposed route crosses nine private property parcels. It's approximately seven tenths of a mile long, that's equates to about eighty-three percent that's city, which is either park-owned or Riverside Drive, which the city owns right-of-way, and about seventeen percent of that, again, is crossing, proposed to cross private property parcels. It is mostly flat and wooded, and also follows along the river for most of the distance. However, it does peel off and head towards the intersection, intersection of Essex and Second Street, because we intend to then cross the bridge to carry it on to Basic Park. So we veer, veer off the river just slightly through there. The funding we have proposed to, the grant application through the Virginia Department of Transportation is known as TAP, or the Transportation Alternatives Program, and there's a breakdown of the Phase Two B budget, and that would include estimated costs for engineering, right-of-way easements, construction, and project administration. This project is advantageous for the city, because we were able to use or able to transfer the fund, the Phase Two A section, which was recently completed, that's a little over $267,000, transfer that over to this project for Two B. The city would still be required to make that match, is the reason I broke it down, so the match for that Two A balance is around $67,000. So our total request for Two B is a little over $200,000. So you see the TAP funds in the bottom, it's a twenty percent match, it's an eighty-twenty grant, as many grants that we have received over the years, including the downtown, all of the Greenway phases, and then the recent application that Mr. Jude made with the East Main Corridor. So that gives the city total match of $117,574, project total a little $587,000. This is just a shot of Riverside Drive, and it's sort of its existing conditions, and of course, the historic Shiloh Church in the bottom. This is the North Park section, you can see the North Park Pavilion in the lower right, and then the existing trail, this is a city-owned area, and in essence, it will look very similar once it's completed, but that again is very wooded, very flat, and as far as folks that have hiked and traversed that area, it is one of the nicest stretches of the particular green, because it is so wooded, shaded, and along mostly on the river on that seven tenths of a mile. So any questions? Again, we are looking for a resolution so that we can apply for the funds for Phase Two B of the South River Greenway.
Any questions from anyone?
I would like to know if the situation has changed with the private-owned people that own the land, some of the land, have their opinion of the Greenway been changed at all?
I have not talked with all of them personally. I believe some of them are present tonight to speak, so they may be able to refer to that. I think in general, the, the opening of the Two A section has been a positive influence on both Port Republic and also connecting into downtown. Again, kids could get from the Port Republic neighborhood to the YMCA without ever crossing a busy street, so that's, in my opinion, a win for the area, but I cannot speak for all the private property owners.
If I might add, we inquired with the Department of Transportation regarding the circumstance in which, if we had not come to favorable resolution or acquired easements, whether that would be an impediment to our application, or whether they would discourage us from applying in those circumstances, and they indicated that that was not the case, that we should make application, and that it's common even in this phase of application and project administration to continue to work through the acquisition of necessary right-of-way.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, I'll hereby open the public hearing.
Ms. Jeanne McCutcheon.
Ms. McCutcheon, if you'll give us your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Jeanne McCutcheon, and actually, I'm speaking for my property that I have on Fairview Avenue, which goes from there to the center of the river, okay? But I do live at 1922 East Main Street.
Thank you.
Remember, I was also on the Greenway Commission when it started. And it actually was supposed to start at Middlebrook Road, you know that. Well, that got stopped. We don't need to go any further. The property at Fairview, I bought it with my husband, so that my three sons, and I and my husband especially, could enjoy some private fishing along the river, with no indication that there would be ever any Greenway or anyone coming across that property, or that I had to give it up. Couple of things I would like to point out to you. Lack of security on that Greenway, for one. The second is, when the Greenway was talked about, and I was on the planning commission, and I think it was Mr. Hatfield who was one of the planning commissions, we had some discussion about it going on that side, and it was supposed to go behind Shiloh Baptist Church. But what happened is, I understand, it cost so much money to fix the bill, bridge, I guess it was a wall, that you needed to fix, that you decide, you know, we have to save some money. Let's save money and not worry about what the people who live there have to say. We want this accomplished, because we want this on our resume to say, we got it accomplished, this city council. You need to take some time and think about it. It was supposed to go behind Shiloh Baptist, and you can check the record. Now, I understand what you have done. You've closed Abbey Street. Abbey Street is a street that goes from Port Republic Road all the way to the river, but you've closed Abbey Street from Shiloh Avenue to the river, to use that as part of the Greenway. And then what happens, you let the Greenway go and use the street, because it's part of the city, that belongs to the city, and have people with their baby carriages, bicycles, walking their dogs, trespassing on church property, walk in front of the church, to go around to come down to Riverside, and then want to go along the river. Well, we just had a flood or heavy rain, and I looked over there and saw that it already flooded out the Greenway that you just put in there. Well, we made you aware, many of them and some of the residents who live in that area, that that area floods a lot. And when I talked to Mr. Hatfield, he said we could go across the other side of the river, because it's higher up, it's less trees to have to cut, possibility of flooding wouldn't be as much as it is on this side. And people in the government here today said to me, we knew that it was going to flood, but we didn't know it was going to happen so soon. So you want to continue to build in a flood plain in an area where there's flood? And when the grant is used up, then who would have to repair it? Who would have to take care of it? We already had it, little mud, whatnot, wasn't bad this time. But the way that the atmosphere and the rains and the storms that we've been having, we could have a hundred flood pretty soon. So for me, I have some problem with it going down that way, because my husband and I, we do not want it to go across the piece of property that we bought many years ago, with no understanding that there would be a Greenway going across it. Now, I'm not saying stop the Greenway.
Ms. McCutcheon, I'm going to have to cut you off.
Thank you. But I just wanted to be pointed out, those are the things that you are doing to try to get this Greenway done. Thank you.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up to speak, sir.
I'll hereby close the public hearing. Is our motion to adopt the resolution?
Thank you.
So moved. Thank you, Mr. Marks. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor say, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five oh. Thank you. Item Four B is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance amending Article Two of Chapter Seventy-Eight of the Code of the City of Waynesboro to enact a new Section Seventy-nine dash thirty-two point one, which will provide for the assessment of all new buildings completed or fit to occupy prior to November the first of the year of completion, and providing for the method of computation of tax on the same. Mr. Hamp.
Yes, sir. Mayor Allen and members of council, this, these proposed amendments essentially furnishes the authority for the municipal organization to bill real estate on a supplemental basis, meaning that, I think you'll recall that Ms. Garris, the city assessor, gave a presentation at a previous meeting. Presently, an improvement, a real property improvement, excuse me, is billed for the tax year based on its state of completion on January first. That introduces a measure of inequity among property owners, and also positions a municipality to fall short of realizing the full benefit of real property improvements through real estate tax. At the time Ms. Garris presented, we indicated that the course of action would be to bring the council an ordinance accomplishing the authority, or furnishing the authority to bill on a supplemental basis, and in order to do that, we must have a public hearing and introduce the ordinance this evening. It would receive second consideration on November second. But essentially, to return to the explanation, that once an improvement is completed, it would allow the municipality to bill for the value of that completed improvement in November of that tax year.
Thank you. Were there any questions with Mr. Hamp? If not, I'll hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak.
And I'll hereby close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Ordinance is introduced this evening will be considered at the November twenty-seventh Regular Business Meeting. Item Five A is to consider affirming the fiscal year 2019 budget calendar. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we've provided a budget calendar for the fiscal year nineteen budget development for your consideration. We've developed a calendar around statutory requirements that certain activities take place, the delivery of the budget from the school superintendent to the council, delivery of the budget to the city manager, to the city council, and then allowed for the various public hearings that may need to occur if you change tax rates or other rates, utility rates, cemetery rates, and so forth. I would note two things. One is that the start date actually had originally, we had originally planned to provide this to council on October the twenty-third. The professional staff has already begun budget development. And then finally, that the May twenty-eighth, the date proposed to approve and add, delete list, amend and adopt the annual budget would be the Memorial Day holiday, so at some point in time, we would amend the budget calendar based on council's preference about rescheduling that meeting. Otherwise, I'm prepared to take questions council may have, and I think we would ask that you simply confirm that the budget calendar.
Any questions, Mr. Shaw?
I would, I would just ask, so prior to my, my tenure on council, as a planning commission member, there's, the Code of Virginia says that the, that a municipal body may ask their planning commission to provide input into the capital improvements plan, and I think with the work that that body has accomplished, continued to work on with regards to the conference of plan, is, not that folks weren't informed otherwise, but I think we're, we've got a very strong presence here on the planning commission. I would just offer for consideration staff's sort of reflection, and maybe to, you know, not necessarily tonight, but maybe consider how the planning commission might play a role in, in participating in, in that discussion. And the reason for, the reason, my primary reason here is that you're, we're, the more that we can share how, how the scale of projects and the cost of projects and to our community, that the easier the conversation, at least I believe, the easier the conversation will be moving forward when it comes time to pay for those sorts of investments, right? So we've, we've created a mechanism where citizens might have heard about something and been prompted by that earlier, so I would just offer that as a, as a topic of consideration.
Is there anything else? All right, is there a motion to affirm the budget calendar for FY 2019?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five oh. Item Six is to consider adopting a resolution to communicate opposition to the proposed daily fee increase at Shenandoah National Park, and requesting the National Park Service reconsider its proposed fee increase. Mr. Hitchens.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. We've discussed on many occasions that the tourism industry is an important economic driver for the city of Waynesboro. I'm here tonight to help ask your assistance with a proposal from the National Park Service. Earlier this year, they have introduced a proposal to increase daily fees at seventeen national parks around the country. Shenandoah National Park is one of those parks. The fee would go from $25 per day to $70 per day, which is a hundred and eighty percent increase. This is in addition to an increase that occurred on January first of 2017, where the fee went from $15 to $25. According to Shenandoah National Park records, just under 83,000 vehicles use the Rockfish Gap entrance on an annual basis. Also, according to park records, they cite contributing $72 million to economic benefit for the communities that surround the park, of which approximately 10 million of those dollars is the area around Rockfish Gap. Your tourism staff, as well as our partners along the Shenandoah Valley and the Central Valley, feel this dramatic one-time increase would be detrimental to the economies of all of our communities, meaning less people visiting the park, which means less people staying overnight in our hotels, less meals eaten, and less shopping done. The National Park Service cites maintenance issues as a reason for this dramatic increase. And while we certainly agree that maintenance is an important contributing factor to the enjoyment and safety of park visitation, again, a one-time visit will deter people, one-time increase will deter people from visiting. The resolution before you tonight recognizes the need for maintenance, but opposes the one-time hundred and eighty percent increase. We appreciate your support in passing this resolution tonight, and if, if you do so, we will mail it to the National Park Service during the public comment period, as well as our federal elected delegation, and it, along with the Economic Development Resolution, which was passed unanimous last Friday. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Hitchens? If not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor.
I would just, I would just to thank staff for bringing this to our attention and taking action on it. It's certainly a, an important topic, and I appreciate their, them staying, staying abreast of it.
Could work another way. People wouldn't want to stay on the parkway, so they'd get off and come down through all these communities down north of here, and we would get even more tourism. But anyway, so I said all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five oh. Item Seven is to consider introducing an ordinance amending Chapter Seventy-eight Taxation Article Two, Real Estate Assessor Board of Qualitization. Section Seventy-eight dash thirty-four, seventy-eight dash thirty-eight, and seventy-eight dash thirty-nine of the Code of the City of Waynesboro. Mr. Hamp?
So these sections explain the roles and responsibilities, timeline, and process by which residents may appeal a real estate assessment. Presently, there is language in these three sections that is unique to the city of Waynesboro, and it's a section of our code that is informed, and, well, let's stop there. It's informed significantly by state code, and it's a section of the state code that the General Assembly amends on a regular basis. So each time that the General Assembly amends the code, we're obligated to amend our code. The amendments presented for your consideration tonight simply reference the state code and simplify the process by which our code will remain in compliance with the state code. And again, this section simply clarifies roles, responsibilities, and timelines regarding appeals of assessment.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding this? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Sure. Item Eight A is to consider approving an application from the Department of Parks and Recreation to close certain streets for amplified sound on Saturday, December the second, 2017, for the Christmas parade. Mr. Hamp?
I think the application is self-explanatory. This is the same route as we utilized last year.
Which is in reverse, the people were accustomed to. Which is in reverse, the people were accustomed to in the past.
I think we reversed it last year, did we not?
Yeah.
Yes, it is in reverse.
Right. It might take a couple of years for people to.
All right. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I know, right.
If not, is there a motion to approve the request at street closures and amplified sound?
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Short, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five o. Item 9A is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of the vacancy savings in the police department to transfer to the information technology department in the amount of $27,762 to provide six months wages and benefits funding for an information technology technician to position. Mr. Hamp?
So a couple of circumstances within the organization that prompt this request. The first being that the position, the IT support position in the police department is presently vacant through resignation. And secondly, you're likely aware that our organization is committed to and fully involved with a software upgrade project that involves most functions, most municipal departments and functions in the organization, which has created some measure of stress for delivering the routine and normal IT support services across the organization. So this evening, the appropriation request and my recommendation is that we fill the IT position in the police department with a crime analyst position. That's a slightly different and downgraded position from the heretofore IT support application position in the PD. And we establish an additional general IT support position in the Department of Information Technology relying on vacancy savings that currently exist in the police department. This is a temporary solution that will get us through the balance of this fiscal year. I would expect that I will present to council a recommendation for a more permanent approach as part of the FY 19 budget process. In the short run, this adds additional support and relief to the IT department during the Munis project, and it gives the police department more specifically what they're looking for, what the chief is looking for in terms of data analysis, data evaluation, and then more specific use of police department technologies and databases. Essentially, I'm asking for the authorization of additional position in the IT department.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Are there any questions? And Mr. Hamp? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Item 9B is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $40,000 from the Stormwater Fund retained earnings to the Stormwater Fund for the purchase of a new pickup truck. Mr. Hamp?
This is a crew truck that's a replacement. When the Stormwater Division or Fund enterprise was created three years ago, they inherited a piece of equipment from the overall Public Works operations fleet. This is appropriation comes from the retained earnings, which essentially is the savings account for the fund. And the vehicle being replaced has, is more than 10 years old and has more than 100,000 miles on it. And we would likely look to the state contract to accomplish the replacement.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Hamp?
When contemplating the $40,000 for the pickup truck, I mean, what, for a 10-year period, so 10,000, you had it for 10 years and you've had over, basically 10,000 miles a year on it. Had there, has there been any kind of conversation about, about maybe not doing a new pickup truck, but maybe something with a few miles on it?
There has not.
Why haven't we looked at that? I mean, why, in the past years of yours, we used to go out sometimes and purchase vehicles that had 10 or 20, 30,000 miles on them. And in today's market, I know the motors that they're building now, it's not unheard of. I mean, back in the old days, 100,000 miles, a car was shot, like for a wholesale vehicle. Nowadays, these motors will run several hundred thousand miles with not a lot of maintenance upkeep to them on the motor side of it. So why have we not done that?
I think that the state contract has proven to be an effective tool for us. And when I say 10 years and 100,000 miles, it could be, it's likely that it has more than 100, I'm being vague, I'm not vague, not purposely vague, but I'm not being specific. Our replacement threshold is 10 years and 100,000 miles. And once it goes past that, we simply mark it in this presentation for we've met those two thresholds. If the council would like, I would bring back the more specific, what is the age of the vehicle, what is the mileage. I would think too, that there is some measure of efficiency in that while certainly shrewd shopping might identify a good buy on the used market, the 40,000 for a new vehicle and the accompanying warranty is not, I wouldn't think, I wouldn't consider that irresponsible or unmotivated purchasing in the same light. But if the council wishes to know more specifically about the vehicle that's being replaced and the prospects for a used acquisition, I'm happy to bring that information.
I kind of like the guidelines that we use now because it does save for considerable money, I know, on other vehicles we had as far as maintenance goes. So when we replace, we have less usually costs in repair.
Right.
So I like the fact that we changed the vehicle out before it falls apart.
Well, I think a lot of our vehicles, we've changed them out, but we put them in other departments. And a lot of those vehicles are still running today, aren't they?
Many of them are, yes, sir. That has been our habit is to exhaust every ounce of life from our vehicles as we can. If I might request respectfully, if we can introduce the ordinance and give me the opportunity to go back and find the additional information and bring back some specific mileage, specific years, specific maintenance experience, and then some observation about the used market and our experience therein.
I think it would work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you. Item 9C is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a portion of the general fund unrestricted unassigned fund balance in the amount of $15,000 to the general fund to provide for environmental services at the city closed landfill. Mr. Hamp?
So presently, we have sort of condensation moisture in our landfill gas extraction system. While we are able in most circumstances to maintain the operation and accomplish simple repair, we're not able to correct the complexity of this particular problem, and we need the professional assistance of the vendor to do that. And then once we get order restored, we'll resume the maintenance and operation. And I would note, this is important because it threatens our ongoing compliance with DEQ.
Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. Item 9D is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating the proceeds from the Harvest Dinner fundraising event in the amount of $7,000 and a donation from Metal Craft Brewing Company in the amount of $172 to the general fund for Parks and Rec fundraising expenditures and a transfer of the balance to the Parks and Recreation Restricted Fund Balance Account. Mr. Hamp?
Unless there are questions from council.
Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Item 9E is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $76,518 from general fund committed fund balance to the school funds for abatement, demolition, and disposal of buildings improvements at 1100 West Main Street. Mr. Hamp?
So, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is the laundromat and the brass crafters building. This is a contribution towards the progress on the Waynesboro High School renovation.
Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
Real quick, is there, it says 79,000? Should it be 76,000 for the second line, paragraph one?
Yes, it probably should be 76,000.
I didn't see that.
Should catch.
Okay, thank you, Alzina. Sir, is there a motion to introduce it at the corrected amount?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Item 9F is an ordinance appropriating a USDA grant in the amount of $1,414 to the school nutrition funds for the fresh fruits and vegetable program at Winona and Wayne Hills Elementary School. Mr. Hamp?
These are grant funds.
Any questions? If not, motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Item 9F2 is an ordinance appropriating a school grant for healthy kids grant in the amount of $2,100 to the school nutrition funds to expand the breakfast program at Kate Collins Middle School. Mr. Hamp?
Also grant funds.
Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Item 9F3 is an ordinance appropriating a Title III immigrant, immigration, children and youth grant in the amount of $3,102 to the school funds for technology materials and supplies. Mr. Hamp?
Also grant funds.
Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Item 10 is to consider appointing two candidates to the Valley Community Service Board for an unexpired three-year term ending June 30, 2019. Mr. Hamp?
This evening, the council has asked to consider the appointment of Ms. Amber Lipscomb and Ms. Mary Miller as Waynesboro representatives to the Valley Community Services Board.
Thank you. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five o. Item 10B is to consider appointing an individual to the Historical Commission.
Ms. Megan Reed presents her name in application. If appointed, Ms. Reed would serve an unexpired four-year term ending August 31, 2020.
Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Reed to the Historical Commission?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five o. Item 10C is to consider appointing two individuals to the Cultural Commission. Mr. Hamp?
So the city council has asked to consider appointing Ms. Megan Reed and Mr. James Wiley to the Cultural Commission. If appointed, Ms. Reed would serve a four-year term ending August 31, 2021, and Mr. Wiley would serve an unexpired term ending August 31, also 2021. Before we take action on this, I would like to simply alert council that Ms. Reed's name is also submitted for consideration for a vacancy on the Parks and Recreation Commission and that, as is Mr. Wiley's. And so that we may consider having already appointed Ms. Reed to a commission, appointing her to Cultural Commission and then following up on her application for Parks and Rec, or perhaps suspending her consideration for Culture, and then circling back with her to consider Parks and Rec versus Cultural Commission. If that's helpful.
What's the?
It's a great problem to have, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, it is unusual that we have, how many positions do we have on Parks and Rec now?
We have at least, so currently, there are three vacancies, Ward A, Ward B, and Ward C. Ms. Reed is submitted for consideration to represent Ward A and as is of Mr. Clark Hayman.
Okay. Normally, we only appoint one person out of each ward.
That's correct.
Okay. What's the pleasure of council? Would we, I know that Ms. Reed is definitely qualified to serve on all three positions, but we might give somebody else an opportunity to also serve.
On the Cultural Commission, do you think, Alzina?
I failed to contact her today. I don't want to make that decision for her.
I'd better talk to her.
It would be nice to talk to her, though.
Why don't we do that?
Okay.
I think, yeah.
I think that's great.
Okay.
So we can consider then Mr. Wiley's candidacy for the Cultural Commission.
Right. All right, we'll do that. Is there a motion for?
For the Cultural Commission or for the?
We're putting him to the Cultural Commission, just Mr. Wiley, right?
That's right. And then he comes up again under Parks and Rec. So if we're thinking about Ms. Reed might end up on two and Mr. Wiley would end up on two, potentially. Ms. Reed actually applied for three.
Oh, I see. Okay, I got it, I got it.
Okay.
I got it.
So we can do Wiley to Cultural and then consider him for Parks and Rec.
Who's on second base now?
It's a great problem to have, a great problem to have, so.
So from what I understand, we're putting Mr. Wiley to the Cultural Commission?
Yes, sir.
All right. And that's the only person?
Correct.
All right. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five o. All right, so now we come to number 10 and for Parks and Rec. Where are we at on that game now?
So where we are at on that one is Mr. Wiley would like to be considered for the Parks and Recreation Commission representing Ward B. And then for Ward A, we have Mr. Clark Hayman and Ms. Megan Reed. I would, I would make a suggestion, perhaps we hold consideration on both appointments until we can speak to those individuals.
Good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds great.
We appreciate their interest, but we're going to confirm that.
So we just go leave D alone?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Number 11 we move to is communications and correspondence.
I do not have anything this evening, sir.
Thank you. Number 12, a citizen's comment period.
Mr. John Lawrence.
Mr. Lawrence, if you'll give us your name and address, please. 765 Pine Avenue. I've briefly read the comprehensive plan and find much of it to like. A brutally frank presentation of our demographics is a step in the right direction toward a solution to our problem. You should remember, however, that being poor and uneducated, which is one of the big things about this report that I read, does not, in fact, preclude success for our plan. After all, most of our parents were in that boat, poor and uneducated, certainly mine were, and look at where we are now. Importantly, I did fail to notice that the plan, I did fail to notice a plan to better communicate and involve the community in this activity. Mr. Short has made several comments this morning, today, about improving that particular aspect, and I wholeheartedly support that. Continuation of the city's failure to address current problems with actions and communications, however, bodes ill for any plans. For example, I wondered about these current problems that I hadn't heard about and I'm not educated about. When will the Florence Avenue Bridge be repaired and reopened? When will the traffic light at 13th and Roster be installed, reinstalled? And why did the city install a fence, lock the public sidewalk to the police and sheriff's office with a gate, and modify the parking lot behind the Gorsh building? How much did it cost? Was the job put up with bids? Where'd the money come from? Was it in the budget? And why is the police department the only emergency service in the city that lacks the traffic light preemption system? And lastly, and I address you to this, Mayor, why did the mayor and my Ward B councilman elect not to attend the Tree Street Neighbors Meeting on the 33 Greenway? We all would have bet it, it would have been better served by his attendance. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Mr. Roy S. Snyder?
I live at 13- I live at 13th D Street in Waynesboro. I'm a member of the Stanton, Augusta, and Waynesboro chapter of the Virginia Organizing. I've been a member for about two and a half years. In my chapter, we have been working to improve communication access to the deaf community and making, we're making great gains, for example, with Augusta Health Medical Center to provide better access to interpreter services for the deaf community members or hard-of-hearing patients and their family members. Now, we're meeting with representatives from the Police Department and the Fire Department and other emergency medical responders in their need for training to better serve those members in that community in the last month. Actually, in last month, our chapter did have a meeting with a Waynesboro chief to learn more about strobe lights related to fire, the smoke detectors. And the chief agreed to make those machines, they need to be, excuse me. So, okay, so, do you mind if I, how about that? So the fire chief agreed to set up a combined department meeting to train with the Virginia Department of the Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing. So I actually asked, I went to Waynesboro and talked for, to the Fire Department there to talk about smoke alarms and with a strobe light for the deaf community. And I've learned that these have free alarms given out to the public, but I also need them as well. The rescue chief, you know, he looked around for prices for fire alarms for the deaf. They cost about $85 to $100 each, and each house needs to have about three fire alarms. And I cannot afford that, plus afford to install those fire alarms as well. So I want to be safe in my home. I want a peace of mind inside, in a case of emergency, in my home. So I want to ask, can the Waynesboro City Council look into providing smoke alarms for the deaf and make sure first responders have the training they need? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jeanne McCutcheon?
Well, since you cut me off, I figured I had another chance.
There you go, Ms. McCutcheon. Name and address, please.
The only other thing I would like to say is that I'm on several boards, and one of the things that were brought to my attention in some of our discussions were that, with the Greenway, some of the people said they enjoy the Greenway, they walk the Greenway, but they're very nervous. They said, I wouldn't walk down over to that area shallow. I said, no, especially not by myself. That's not a good selling point for our Greenway, to have people afraid to walk in certain areas of the Greenway. One of the things is because of the homeless population that we have that happen to be transferred from one section of the city to that area. And so now that's impacting the Greenway, and I just want you all to be aware of that and think about it, that that's also in the face that something needs to be done about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon. Anyone else? Well, just before we close tonight, I would like to make one comment, in reference to Mr. Lawrence wanting to know why I was not at the meeting. Was at a meeting here at this building at 6:30 that night that didn't end till almost 20 minutes after 7:00. So when you made your statement about, I didn't have any plans, or you didn't, you know, you checked my calendar, you didn't know what you were talking about. So I'd just like to share that with everybody. And so that's my comment for that, and we are, motion to adjourn?
Motion made.
We are adjourned.